I think we should split.
Split up? Why?
I want to meet new people, people who need me.
New people? You're my left kidney.
You only need one of me, man, and you have two. There are plenty of people out there who are dying because they don't have one.
Really?
You'll be giving the gift of life.
And I could be a hero.
Yeah, so I'll win-win up here, buddy. Why don't you go and save a life, pal? You're doing the right thing.
What do we need to do now? So now we have a presentation from H&amp;H Leadership Services for our public meeting. Take it away, boys.
Sorry, everybody, I was on mute. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephen Hartz from H&amp;H Leadership Solutions. Today, we're going to talk about some services that we are offering to Weston County Health Services to help them with some challenges. Again, for those who were not or did not see us last week when we were there, on today, you have myself, Stephen Hartz. I'm a retired naval helicopter pilot with 21 years of active duty service. I'm a member, fellow of the American College of Healthcare Executives, and I am the principal and president of leadership and executive recruitment. And I have Charles with me.
Good to see everyone. My name is Charles Hall. I have over 30 years of healthcare experience. I'm a clinician, a nurse by trade, and over the last several years, I've been a CEO and ran a number of hospitals. We've been in healthcare advisory for the last several years, working with organizations just like yourself, working to stabilize them and take them to the next level.
Thomas?
It's been very quiet.
Oh, Thomas, are you there? Do an introduction?
He may not have his volume up.
I think he's having a chat.
Yeah, it looks like he's having difficulty with the audio.
So I'll explain Thomas Steiner. So Thomas Steiner is our senior advisor at H&amp;H. Greater than 30 years of experience in healthcare has been a multiple-time hospital CEO, critical access, FQHCs to large systems, as well as long-term acute care facilities. He is, in addition to Charles and I, he is a marine veteran and has been with our team for quite some time. We've been working with him for the last several years. I always start off by showing this example of the iceberg when we were talking about some of the challenges that your organization has, as we addressed last week. We know about the top one-third of the organizational challenges from what we've seen, what we've heard, and we're going to propose an option to show the rest of the challenges that your organization has, so we can develop a solution set to help the organization move forward and be as efficient and effective as possible for providing great quality care for the community. I'm going to turn it over to Allison real quick, so she can talk a little bit about the regulatory compliance.
Yeah, so when we were looking at bringing the H&amp;H folks in, we were concerned about improving our compliance program to ensure that we're keeping up to date with industry standards, including making sure that we are compliant and are reporting any concerns properly. We also, as this board knows, have had some turnover in HR and CEO over the last few years. And so we need to look at doing some updates on policies, procedures, and employment, job descriptions, to help make sure that we're giving our employees a clear guide forward on what their role is and that it's in compliance. Because if we're in compliance, we get to build a federal government for healthcare, which helps all of our patients that need, you know, Medicaid, Medicare. So, Stephen, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you, Allison. Onto the next. So when we talk about the agenda, a lot of what we address is data. When we're looking at an organization, when you want to be able to determine how you're going to move forward with efficiency and effectiveness and improvement, we use data to help support that position and benchmark where you currently at and where you need to go against best practices in the industry. As an example, one of the things we often fire, find with data is the MGMA data when we talk about challenges with hiring. What is the cost of hiring the wrong person? What is the cost of lost productivity or somebody leaves because they're unhappy? And in organizations of your size, that could equate to as much as $8 million in lost revenue through poor hiring practices or a not-good culture. That's not the best language, but we'll go with that. We're going to go ahead and start telling you about the recommendations. We have three recommendations that we would ask the board to consider.
Well, we were brought in last week, and over the last couple of weeks, we'd have opportunity to get to know Weston County Health Services and to really understand where they are, current state of culture. The concerns that were brought to us is absolutely the board and the CEO was concerned about what they were seeing in the clinic and across the organization. Through multiple conversations, reviewing of some reports, we absolutely agree that urgent action is required. The goal is to stabilize the clinic's culture as well as to mitigate the organizational risk. The immediate focus needs to be on the people into repairing some of the concerns that we've heard to mediate between providers and providers and staff and providers and all of the stuff that sometimes gets a little bit off in organizations across the nation to really help them feel valued, to value one another, and to be able to move forward. Now, these are, the transitions are a little bit slow on our end. And so some of the key activities that we would be working with is, if we're proposing to work with, is to work with your team directly, to be able to have further open, honest conversations with them, to be able to go a little bit transparent with themes of concerns, but also to work with your team to really look forward, to focus on patient care and becoming the team that we all know they can become. Many of this activities that we would be working with is both public relations inside your organization as well as outside of your organization to really get the communication moving forward in a very positive, constructive manner, all while identifying maybe some risks that is out there and working with your team to help mitigate that risk. We would have a standing weekly meeting, not only with the CEO and potentially legal, if need be, but also with the board chair and the board itself when you all meet. Knowing that the time is the essence, getting this action started ASAP is extremely important. We do believe that we can have a very strong impact of this type of work over the next three months in conjunction with helping bring on an interim Chief Human Resource Officer.
As we talk about the interim CHRO, the objective is to place somebody to help stabilize the HR aspect of the organization or your people pillar. We want that individual to be on board quickly and to conduct a comprehensive assessment of your HR program to help build a strategic plan for HR within the first 30 days. We will work to identify qualified candidates, of which we currently have four that have been identified with the potential for initial interviews occurring as early as Wednesday of this week. The obligation is typically a minimum of 90 days. That timeline could be shortened if we find a permanent CHRO for the organization, which we would conduct concurrently while we have the interim placed. Key activities for this interim CHRO would be the program review, policies, and practice refinement.
It was interesting when he was removed. There's quite a few people that will remember my comments at the time because it came after Ogden reportedly, I guess you should say, because it was reported and then they claimed that, he claimed that didn't happen, but we all saw the letters where he made the chairmans of the board sign that we're going to do this and that and the other thing, and we're not going to disobey.
And we're not going to disobey. I love that. I love that part. We're not going to disobey.
Pretty much. That's what I got from it, reading it is, aye aye, Captain. We will follow your rule. It kind of made me look a little different at Driscoll. And then this year's made it even.
Well, you didn't just look different. Let's, come on, you gave him a nickname even.
I gave him a nickname. He was saved in my phone still to this day as Dictator Driscoll. And I still don't feel bad about that because Weston County hasn't seen him once leading up to this session.
Key activities for this interim CHRO would be the program review, policies, and practice refinement. Recruitment strategy, which is a key component of HR. A retention plan, how do we keep the best employees that we have? HR generalist coaching. You have a young HR generalist there who is eager to learn more and be more engaged with the organization's HR practices and policies. Identify and manage your organizational risk regarding people. The implementation of your ADP system, which is a transition for your payroll from Meditech to ADP. And then additionally, hiring one additional HR generalist or HR assistant. And then we again would conduct this with the permanent CHRO search. And then the HR would also execute a plan from an independent investigation into any risk or regulatory concerns. When we look at the cost of an interim HRO, it's approximately $32,000 a month for total cost all in. If you look on the left, the daily rates, those rates are what interim CHROs typically charge for this position. Those are temporary in nature. And unlike maybe some positions where you're looking for just an individual to be able to carry out a normal plan, this is a reevaluation and reimplementation of an entire HR practice and policies for a hospital. Those are specialists and by their very nature have a higher demand rate. In that calculated, you also have the standard fees that go with an interim, which include the daily per diem rate, a car rental rate, unless the organization has a car that the individual can drive. The trips to the organization and home from the organization at the end of the assignment and typically a trip home every other weekend. So on average, on a 90-day assignment, that's 65 billable days on average. Now we'll go into the operational review or the third proposal that we have for the organization. Charles?
In conjunction of the advisory services and the interim CHRO, an operational review of your departments and your programs, we recommend to move forward. While we were there, we scratched the surface. We were able to speak to many of your leaders and your employees and providers. We were able to see kind of a section of some of your operational performance, maybe some of those compliance and quality reports as well. And that led us to, wow, there probably needs to be an opportunity of what is current state against industry standards? And that assessment or that review that can provide a clear picture of where you need to go over the next one, two, and possibly three years. One moment. The key activities here would be a preparation before going onsite. Generally, that's about three weeks. We would be doing pre-visit interviews, a significant level of documentation request to be able to review and understand prior to a minimum of a four-day onsite visit to your organization. We would focus on the programs, the services, the patient experience, culture and engagement, the financial performance, and then identify any risk challenges that may come from that moment and to be transparent with the CEO, board, and any legal, if need be. My apologies, the connection's a little bit slower. So I'll jump over here to this one right here, a little quicker. So we come onsite for a four-day visit. About two to three weeks thereafter, a written report. Our reports are really based off of against benchmark or against industry standards. We provide a level of education to what, we'll say, what good it looks like, what the standards are. We present a view of what we observed, and then we present recommendations against those industry standards on what needs to be done moving forward. That report is generally ready about two to three weeks thereafter after our onsite visit. We would come back, not only deliver that report, but also give a presentation to the CEO, to the leadership, as well as to the board themselves. Timing on this is things that I spoke to about two months, thereabouts, on that part with the written. But our goal is to have this done no later than early May.
So for the advisory services and the operational overview, that would be a lump sum of $45,000 paid over three months at $15,000 a month. And again, we hit the overview of the key activities. I want to quantify that the advisory services and operational overview are being done in parallel at the same time. It's not one before the other. So all the services of the advisory, the operational, and the work with the interim CHRO kind of all dovetail into each other to provide a total solution for the organization. With that being said, I'll open it up to any questions from the board or the public.
I checked on your references. They were glowing.
Thank you.
You know, I'm so glad, I'm so glad you brought that up, Leanne. Did anybody else call any of them?
Nope, I did not.
Did we get a list?
I didn't see a list.
All I got was a.
I sent it.
But there was no list of references.
She didn't list.
I sent you a list on Monday. No, Friday. What day was it? Sunday? One of those days. I sent a list to you guys, three references. I said, if you want to, two of you could do it one at a time. You certainly can still call them. But Leanne, do you want to expand a little bit on what you heard?
Well, sure. At Cascade Medical, I don't know where these people are from, but it's Pat Sungar. He's a COO. So they signed a two-year contract with him. The project was leadership development and training. They did some recruitment of physicians and directors. They were participating in the marketing and social media plan. And I noticed that they had EMS on the, on the page that I got to look up the people. And it said that they did ambulance services. And he will give, Randy, he will give you his number in case you ever want to talk about.
Yes, and talk you can.
Okay. He does talk. He says he's got 34 years of experience, so. Then there was this Mike Post. He's from Northeast Montana Health. And, um, let's see, they did a restructuring, CFO.
See, yep.
Pardon?
Yeah, very, very big.
Yeah, organizational transformation, revenue cycle. Yes, very good, so. My castle out of Melissa Memorial Hospital. He said that they're into about four to five months left on their agreement. They did a year, I believe, a year contract. They did some recruitment. Very happy with the services. They like everybody, everything about them. They're doing ongoing management of budget, leadership and development. And the trust is high. He said the trust was very, very high. Because they, and he also felt like they got more return on their investment than any other plan that they've ever tried. They were pretty satisfied with everything. That's about it.
So if you guys look in your personal emails, I sent it out on Saturday, and I followed it up with a reference, you know, an outside work reference sheet that you could have filled out. So, um, and I just sent it in your personal emails because it was a Saturday. So I'm sorry if you didn't see it. But they're still there, so if you want to call yourself. I just had suggested that you do it together, like we did before with other things, so they didn't get 15 phone calls. Well, actually, six. So.
I was going to do mine with Dany, but she, she had a funeral to go to. I said, I'll just do. I was going to do mine with Dany, but she, she had a funeral to go to. I said, I'll just do.
Anyway, again, I think that since we're in the public meeting and we're talking about the different things that H&amp;H has to offer, I think it's important for them to know that the HR person that we bring in will be a seasoned professional, will be here as much as they need to be to take care of the needs, the urgent needs and the ongoing needs that we have. And that, you know, not only will they take over the HR pieces, to my knowledge, I mean, certainly jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but also teaching for the staff. And, you know, it's a whole lot more than just recruiting and hiring. It's, it's being there every single day for those questions that the staff has. It's, it's being there, you know, the payroll issue is a big, huge piece. The policies are enormous because the policies, some of them are so antiquated that we really need to redo them. And so there's, so there's, this is a huge job. And I think that, you know, although I was surprised at the fees because I wasn't aware, but I think that after doing some research that the fees are, as they state, as Stephen stated, reasonable and unders a lot of the fees. I know that, um, I think that if we had legal do it or anybody else do it, it would be a whole lot more expensive. And the other thing is, is you got to keep in mind is, is even though it's unlikely, we can still do those contracts in 30-day increments. But, um, I don't think that, we need so much help in the HR department besides the other pieces of the hospital that it's probably unlikely, but it is there if we need to. You know, if we find, if we find like the, you know, the most amazing HR person in the world walks in the door after 30 days, well, then maybe we change direction. But it's a piece that you need to know.
Once they're going to go through the policies and the job descriptions and handle all the recruitment that we get, I think it's going to be at least three months to get through that. So get somebody in the door that they're like not overwhelmed.
Right, well, you're absolutely right. Besides looking at the policies, the policies that need to be changed, they need to be re-implemented, you know? Like I keep telling you that, you know, we have, there's a piece of one of the policies where we actually have salaried people that think they can have overtime. And there's no reinforcement. There's no, there's nobody paying attention. And that's just one little teeny thing.
I knew about that and paid. I objected to it two years ago.
Right. That's just one little piece. So, you know, and then I was, I was teasing with the boys. I said, you know, I don't know that we really need a policy on how to clean the refrigerator, but, you know, we have a whole lot more things that are way more important.
What we can't do is hire these guys, or anybody else for that matter, and still not make the changes.
Exactly.
That's what we can't do.
I mean, we just have.
You're right, Ann. This is a commitment. This is a solid commitment. But the question is, do you, does anybody really think that we, that we can't do this? That we shouldn't do this? That we can manage on our own?
No, I just think we got to take advantage of it and do a good job of having them and make some changes.
And do an assessment every year to make sure we're on target.
Right, we can't just fiddle around and just spend the money and not do anything.
Part of that was.
We've got to do it. We won't be.
You know, we had the management contract, which we really didn't have much say over with the CEO did. So it's a different game now, I think. Don't you think?
You know, we've had, we made huge changes and we saw huge changes in the beginning of '23. And we've tried hard to progress forward, just keep moving forward. You know, put some structure to the board, change some policies that the employees really needed, have minutes from all of our committee meetings. You know, all these things that we put into place, it's positive forward thinking and motion. We need to just keep that going. And I personally don't think that we have the ability, as I said before at the other meeting, that we don't have the people that can help Randy do this without the help of H&amp;H.
Because they all act.
Connie, you had your hand up.
Why don't you call my cellphone? I'll put you on speaker.
Good idea.
My comment was going to be, we need objectivity. And this is what is being provided. Someone outside, someone who has lots of experience, who will come in and be unbiased and really point out and really dig into all of the issues.
Yes, agreed, agreed. Here, here.
I say, I think you can't move forward until you know what all your problems are.
Exactly.
And it can get ugly. And, but I think the day-to-day operations, people don't have time to do all this on their own, to create this. So that's why I think you just need, these people are specializing in this, no matter the cost, but it has to be done if we want to move forward. And that's kind of what I've come to the last two weeks or week just thinking about it. Like, it has to happen.
Yeah, I agree.
I've laid awake too many nights since they left, thinking of the risk. We can't.
Yeah, we got to find a baseline. Where are we at? And then how do we build from that foundation and scaffold it up and build?
And we need a candidate.
Yeah, we just got to get to the root cause of everything.
We'll try to fix it, but you're going to have to be honest about it, you know? Can't shove stuff into the carpet.
Right, and to reiterate what Allison said, you know, there's more things that have come to light in the last few days. And it's now, it's an urgency. It's not a, oh, we'll talk about it later. We'll vote on, we have to do it now so we can get it in motion and get it going.
I know.
Any other comments? Discussion?
I make a motion that we move forward with hiring H&amp;H for the, for, for the services that they've provided in this overview and to start as soon as possible.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuuk Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
I make a motion that we move forward with hiring H&amp;H for the, for, for the services that they've provided in this overview and to start as soon as possible.
Can, can we back up just a second? Because there is, it would, I think, be helpful for the minutes if we had an approval of the two separate pieces. One would be amount for the operational review and advisory solutions. And then secondarily, for not to exceed on the CHRO.
Um, okay. Let me see the picture of the $45,000. Is that what the upper limit, was the upper limit the 108?
Yes, the 108.
So, Dottie, do you use your motion or do you want?
So your motion? So your motion is to hire H and H for the services proposed for the advisory solutions and operational review. In the amount of forty five thousand dollars?
Yes. So I make a motion for, for, for H and H services for the operational review and advisory. Services for the sum of forty five thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Okay.
Second. Discussion?
Discussions.
I think I'm just, I'm for it because the situation is urgent. There's a level of urgency here. And that's why I'm just getting it out there. Why I'm gonna vote for it. So.
All in favor?
I.
I.
opposed.
So I move that we. Have H and H hire a.
May I make an interjection real quick?
Yep.
Uh, I would. You have put in a not to exceed a one hundred and eight, a couple of things that I would just throw out for you. The arrival and departure flights are based on a yearly average. So they're not an accurate assessment. I don't know what flights are going to cost in a month or two months or something like that.
As long as we get them out by, before the summer, we're good to go.
Exactly. So what I would ask is in your not to exceed, if there can be a ten percent variance. Just to account for and only to account for costs associated with flights or rental cars. And, and we provide all the documentation. So it's clearly annotated. Because he actually will build the organization directly back for that expense. So I would ask that you consider that because I know the daily per diem rate, I know their daily rate. The flights and the rental car rate are the only variances that I can give you a best guess on.
Do you need an amendment?
So how, well, no, I don't think it got moved. So we don't need to amend. So, so I move that. That we hire the interns and interim CHR, our. And CHRO and for the. Hundred and not exceeding the hundred and eight thousand plus or minus ten percent. Which you, which H and H will help us find the right person.
I thought we were talking about the other one.
That, that sound.
Good.
I second it.
Need discussion?
I hear Connie is talking, but we don't hear her unfortunately.
Call, call in.
Getting closer, Connie. We can hear you when you get closer.
No, look at my nose, right? Anyway, I said we can always come back depending on. Back to the table to discuss, you know, moving forward. Right now we have sixty five billable days, but perhaps it will take longer. So.
Right.
So I think there is that option of revisiting the amounts needed depending on the need.
Correct. I agree. So do we have to, do we have to then state that it's, that the motion is for sixty five days with, with revisit?
It, and just to clarify, it's sixty five billable days in a night.
Right.
So what the, so what the board is approving is the not to exceed amount that, that the CEO can work with. H and H to engage this person.
And then if we need to, we can come back.
So the board is approving the funding.
Right.
Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
opposed.
I didn't get who made the second. Sorry, I'm not a very good secretary.
It was Dottie.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
My discussion is congratulations, welcome onboard. And can you start tomorrow?
No, yeah.
Thank you very much. We were honored to be given this opportunity to work with Weston County. Our goal is to not only meet, but to exceed your expectations. And we will start working on this ASAP. And Thomas, pack your bags.
Oh, is it Thomas?
Steven, can we get slides sent out to the board too, or sent to Randy and Randy gets it out to the board? Thank you.
The what?
The slides from today, because I can't write that fast.
Yes, I will forward the, I will forward the slides to Randy.
Yeah, we'll just take out the personnel stuff. That's all.
Yes.
But quite, I have a question. Will you, this includes Thomas, I guess it's Thomas, attending the board meetings as well?
One of us will be attending every board meeting.
Okay, great.
Typically that will be Thomas. But if we have multiple engagements, so if he's offsite, one of us will always be there.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then I have another question. Of course, I have a million questions. How often will we be updated so that the board will, will look forward to, you know, frequent updates? I know we can't meet, you know, fifteen times a month like we've been doing, but. But the thing is though, every month is difficult because that's, a whole month is a real long time. You know what I'm saying? So.
The CEO will be updated weekly as we have weekly engagements with the CEO. And typically with legal, the board chair and the CEO will have a little slightly longer bi-weekly. Meeting. And then we will be able to present if desired at the board meeting every month for in whole.
Great. Thank you.
Does the board want to entertain during this transition process during the next three months? We perhaps schedule a meeting every two weeks instead of once a month? So then it's scheduled. I mean, it's a lot easier for me if it's in my schedule than if it just pops up on a Friday night.
I'm to, I'm totally fine with that. Is everybody fine with that?
I am.
I'm just thinking bi-monthly, carry might be easier.
You mean.
Bi-monthly instead of every two weeks?
Twi, twice. Yeah.
Fair.
I'll take a look at the schedules and, and then I'll send something out to you guys. But, and I'll send you messages to look for the messages.
Don't, my phone doesn't work anymore because I'm home. So.
Oh, do you get?
Yeah, but you get personal emails right in?
Yes.
So that's why, that's why I sent them personal on Saturday, just for that reason.
So thank you, but it might be, you know, Alan got, I've had company all weekend. Alan got home.
It's okay.
That's why I just didn't. Pretty likely.
Well, I'm extremely excited and I hope everyone else is too. I think this is the, you know, continuation of the new Weston County Health.
New and improved.
Yep.
Long as we don't throw out the good with it.
Any further discussion?
I'm not, I wasn't the champion.
I better resend that.
Connie, I think you're up again.
She's got a date or something.
I'll second.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
I.
I.
opposed. Me.
Well, Jane, you're getting.